Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Whitehall City Council for Wednesday, March 20, 2024. If everybody please rise for a moment of silence and follow by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, Lord, would you please call roll.
Morrison.
Peck.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harkar.
Present.
Dixon.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
President Potter.
Present. I would now expect or accept a motion to excuse the absent member.
Mr. President, I'd like to excuse absent member.
A second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Dixon to excuse the absent member. There's very discussion. Please, Lord, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. We've got the minutes for the March 5th, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as the March 12th, 2024 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes. And I would take a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Harkar for the adoption of the minutes of March 5th, 2024, as well as March 12th, 2024. There's very discussion. Please, Lord, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation by Monet Ewing, Communications Manager for YouTube, a different streaming opportunity.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you during the time. There are some of the questions and concerns that you had about the discussion that the mayor brought to you about using YouTube versus Facebook. So today, one of the things that I did was we set up a Facebook page specifically for the Whitehall City Council. Part of that is so that we can meet the transparency that you've been looking for and at the same time be able to manage and make it look a lot more professional than what we've ever done. Next slide.
It's not coming up, huh?
You're setting it up.
Julie, it's not on the.
It's not on screen.
Oh, she was going through.
Okay, well.
That's funny. She kept, she kept like. It's just not casting.
That's weird.
Yeah, I should say it was just.
It's okay.
There's one. There you go. Now, can you just make it bigger? Oh, okay.
There we go.
Then, actually, if it's a little projector button, you can have it take the whole screen. Right hand side looks, are you familiar with?
There you go.
There you go.
Right.
So close.
The one right there. And then.
There it is. It takes a city.
Okay, so go to the next slide. So as you can see, you guys have your own Facebook page as of today. And in setting this up, I did put the links to both our Instagram, well, our Instagram, our website, and our YouTube are all attached to this so that it makes it an all-encompassing communication network for the council and for the city. And so the way I'm doing this is I have been kind of trying to mirror the way the City of Columbus does things. I spent an entire day over with the Columbus Communications Department and with their TV crew to kind of see how they do things and how we can make the City of Whitehall look so much more professional in our social media and our website use. So the next slide that you're going to see is actually the City Council of Columbus. If you wish to see them in actual, like, live, there is a link there. But for your website, it is www.facebook.com/whitehallcitycouncil. And then you can go find the City Council on the link you shared. So that's, as you can see, it's very, very similar between yours and Columbus's. Next slide, please. So then we go to YouTube. I know it's hard to see, it's small. But these are each of the playlists that we were talking about where the City Council has their own playlist in Whitehall. The top one on the right is the Columbus City Council's stream. And what happens is they go live, they use systems to put like lower thirds, and they can identify who's talking, and then it streams live to here. They don't necessarily stream it on their Facebook. Next slide. This is ours. Same thing, only ours is the second one down, and you can see where all of your council meetings are. The difference between Columbus right now and us is that we stream live to Facebook, and then the next day Julie has to go pull that file that is now on a reduced resolution, so it's very pixelated, and then she puts that on YouTube. So it does not stream currently live to YouTube, and therefore, because Facebook has a smaller file stream, it is compressed. So when it goes to YouTube, it is not hitting the 1080p that it should be, where it is a better picture and more clear. So that brings me to Monet Ewing. So then I started looking at some analytics, and I wanted to kind of show you because that was one of the things that we had worked at. Is there any way to get this full screen?
Yeah, there should be. IT is coming over right now.
So I know that the last time this was discussed, there was a lot of discussion about analytics and how they appear, how each of the clicks mean something. What I wanted to show.
He used to want the preview.
It's okay, I can talk to this.
It's because you guys have two monitors.
It's because of the two monitors, huh? So, not to waste too much time. So as many of you know, we have a coffee chat on Saturday. And so I pulled up the analytics on that specific event. It's one of the last ones we put up onto the Whitehall Facebook page. Our reach, well, impressions, that means how many people have actually been in front of their face, was 2,979. It reached 2,830. So that means somebody stopped for a second, there was something there, right? The most important number is our engagement, right? So engagement means somewhere where somebody has clicked, shared, liked, sat and watched for a couple of seconds, like actually had an action, right? This particular post had 504 engagements, which is actually the most that we've had in quite a while. And I, part of that I take as the way the post itself was written, which was very happy-go-lucky, it had some emojis in it, it had things that people were looking for. Because it really was a flyer that really caught a lot of people's attention, right? So that's kind of how that works, right? So then if you go to the next page, we talk about YouTube and how YouTube reaches, is calculated and how it comes about. The last meeting that we had, there was 39 minutes of view time across the board for viewers of this particular meeting, right? And that didn't come until the next day, obviously, because it wasn't put up until the next day. But what we did find is if you look on the right here, you see the blue line? That blue line is the viewing for the council meeting. And it is, it identifies that this was either on a YouTube app or on the YouTube website itself. So that's where most of our views are getting. Even if we click on Facebook, it's, people are still going to YouTube to watch it. Again, it comes back to when it's livestreamed to Facebook versus YouTube, the size of the file and what you can't account for. So in hearing the concerns that came from the council when Mayor Vivens was explaining this to you, I wanted to kind of address those questions. The recommendation at this point is that there is a system, there's a program that would help me to do justice. StreamYard, which would cost me about $230, $240 a year, allows me to stream more than, to more than one platform at a time. So we would be able to do the livestream and then stream it to the council's Facebook page and to YouTube at the same time live, which would double our engagement, our reach, because now we're not only reaching the Facebook crowd, but we are actually reaching the YouTube crowd. Doing so, Julie can go back into Facebook and she can schedule each of these meetings to come up as an event. And they can all be pre-scheduled. So that, here's the event, okay, and then you'll get a ding light or two. So you get to RSVP to it, and then you also get your reminder. And I felt like those were the biggest concerns I was hearing. So if there's any questions that you guys have for me, I hope I haven't touched on everything else.
I do, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
So with the StreamYard, you said it'll reach Facebook and YouTube. It does the engagement, what about the reach? Is it going to capture both at the same time?
Everything, everything else in the background is what I would look at on my platforms. But what it will do is when I do a livestream through, through StreamYard, remember I was telling you that, that Facebook takes a lower, it's like 920 or something like that? And then YouTube takes a 1080p. Those are two completely different size files. So if you go to Facebook, it's going to be more segregated and it's going to be more pixelated. Where if you go to YouTube, it gives you a much better picture. And then inside StreamYard, we can program where a lower third comes up. Say you're talking. And it will say, "Councilwoman at Large," or "Mayor Vivens," or, but it'll, she'll be able to push a button, and that will come up in the livestream. So people will always know it's talking. Because one of the problems that we do have right now is because of the way the camera system is, it's kind of hard to see, understand who's talking sometimes.
Just about that big.
Yeah. On that note, though, I have, I have started conversations with IT about eventually redoing the cameras in this room so that we have a better camera system that would allow us to better stream the lives for.
Well, because one thing always gets lost is whenever we have a presentation, folks at home don't have a clue what we're looking at.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
But does it, does it combine the engagement of both of those coming together and just set one engagement?
No, so I would still go look at the different engagements on the different platforms. And I could tell you which is which. YouTube is a little bit more accurate, I'm not going to lie, because of the fact that it will tell me the minutes, down to the minute. Where sometimes when you scroll through your Facebook, for the people that have Facebook, you scroll through it and a video just starts playing. Now there's an engagement, even if you didn't want to see that video. And then that helps me to better focus the content or, you know, we can see where they were interested, what are they interested in when they're watching the council meeting. If we can get some videos up that kind of tell what's going on with the council and why it does it, and which ones are engaging.
So by going with StreamYard, if I'm understanding, because I'm far from an IT person, that is going to, so we can go Facebook and YouTube, so that one concern, as you well know, was that people have always been on Facebook, you know, we don't want to disrupt their lives, so there's, this should be smooth and seamless and not disrupt anything.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and StreamYard is not something we would just use for this either. It's, it's usable across the platform.
Across, yes.
So for instance, the state of the city, last year AV was more than $10,000. Well, part of that is the fact that they had two cameras, they had to do setups where they could go to screens and then go live. I can do all that in this one program with one camera or two, depending on what we deem to be necessary. So it's not, I wanted to make sure that this is not just for that.
Sure.
Encompassed in many activities that we have in this city.
For $200 some dollars a year.
Yes.
Are people able to make comments on the council meetings?
Yes, sir, or yes, ma'am. So all I have to do is go into YouTube. I was, I noticed that there were some comments about not being able to comment. There wouldn't be what's called live comments, so like a livestream necessarily, but they still can go in and comment in live time as the, as the council's going, because there's a time hack on there where I can see where they, where they did. And one of us would most likely be monitoring that during those council meetings.
How, how do you mean that? I mean, right now, on Facebook, people watch the meeting, and on the right, there's a bar for comments, and people can say, you know, "Great job," or "I think that's crazy," or whatever else it is. They have the ability to comment right now on what's going on.
And they can on YouTube as well.
No, but I'm saying on, on anything. You're saying that that's.
So there's a difference between a live, open commentary and comments on a video. So what you're actually doing in Facebook is commenting on the video. It's, it's not as much as a open commentary, right? Which, when you do an open commentary live on YouTube, I'm sure I'm not using the right terminology, but when you do that on YouTube, they expect that somebody is going to be interacting with them.
Responding.
Responding. So instead, we just leave the comments open, just like we do on Facebook, so that they can continue to comment as they want to.
What I'm talking about on Facebook.
Would stay the same.
It would stay the same.
Yeah, that is actually a part of Facebook. It would not change.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, I, my reservations with YouTube are what they are. My entire position at the time was, was you want to do YouTube? It's got analytics, you can do this, that, whatever. Whatever my reservations are don't necessarily really matter as long as there is still the Facebook Live and people can interact and go on there. Because I'll tell you, and one of the reasons that I, I think it's important to people and why it's a good thing, is like I said, you've got the video here, and you can talk about, you know, it, it gives the citizens an ability to participate and, and, and make their feelings clear, whatever else it is, at that moment. Whereas on YouTube, I noticed, I go on there, and you have to scroll down away from the video. And the video is only partially available, and you have to comment and then reply, and then it drops down another thing, and then you reply on that. So it kind of takes away from watching it and replying, you know, it takes away from. So that was, that was a, a concern that I had in mind. But as long as that Facebook Live feed is, is up and running, as it always has, I don't have any issue with YouTube. And I will say that publicly, because I know that I have some concerns.
And that is why we did the Facebook for the City Council. You will not hear on Facebook that it is yours. It is yours. We can live on it, we can, you know, within reason, but if the council would like to show, to include those livestreams.
Yeah, well, let me ask you then as well, because right now, the, the live streaming of these meetings is on the City of Whitehall Facebook page. You're saying this is the Whitehall City Council Facebook page. How is this going to be different?
So the only thing we'll do is that we will just advertise that this council meeting is going to be made on the City of Whitehall page to the City Council's page. And we'll go a couple of weeks and make sure that, that that is acknowledged that's out there before we hop over to the City Council page.
Okay.
So it won't just be, okay, it's there tomorrow, or like, it's not just going to go up there so people won't see it.
And will they still get the same notifications?
So yes, when they're on the Facebook, once they go into the Facebook.
City of Whitehall's going live.
Yeah, so it'll say, it'll say, "Whitehall City Council is going live." Once they follow you.
So they'll have to like.
We just have to make sure that they like and follow.
So they have to like the City of Whitehall Council page?
Correct.
Or the Whitehall City Council page?
And that's what all the marketing is going to be about, is to get them to go over there, to get them to like and follow, so that they can get those notifications.
Okay. Do we have to like and follow the City of Whitehall Facebook page right now?
Yes. You have, you have to do a follow and like to get those notifications.
Oh, you do, okay. It's been a while since I've been on.
It's all about the notifications. You can go look at the pages, should be up by in the morning, but you can, I mean, like, where you can search it, which you can look at, if you want, from the address I gave you. But yeah, you'll have to get that, we just got to, we have to get followers to move.
To like one more page, just, I mean, if you click over here, click the button, it'll make it easier, I would think, if people want to go back and watch an old council meeting and find it, as opposed to scrolling through all the other things that a city is posting as well.
And then there'll also be archived on YouTube, as well as an archive that, that I will have personally, like, not personally, but the city will have archives.
I just had a quick question. Well, number one, I appreciate, it seems like you're trying to, you know, make the best of everything, you know, whatever. So I, I can appreciate that. But the question I had was, I see that the second option is circle. I was just curious how you came up to the decision to choose that one over the other option? And basically, just what other benefits do StreamYard offer, like what are the pros?
She looked excited for that question. I was waiting on someone to ask.
So with the, with the Free StreamYard, because you can do it free, their logos are on there. So that's obviously a logo, because we have to have our logos. The first one has, it's, I believe it's three different screens that you can have. As, so right now, I can do two. I can do three with the first one. But there's also more, there's more, more help, more technical assistance that comes with that one, more ability to add more people, so if I, if we, if, we're the city council, or we're the state of the city, right? And we want to bring people in that'll be able to watch, there's more seats for people to actually walk, step in and watch it live, if they want to step into StreamYard. It gives us the ability to do conferences. If we needed to do a video conference that we did during COVID, it gives you an opportunity to have up to 10 people.
Like Teams type thing?
Yeah. Up to 10 people across the country on, on a, on a conference or a presentation or, you know, that kind of thing. And it's, it's good for education as well.
And just to be clear, you brought it up a second ago, but you were talking about the different video quality between the two platforms. Just to be clear, if you use this, it's going to be good quality, like, it would be the same quality on, that you're seeing now on Facebook on Facebook, and it would be 1080p.
Better, better on YouTube.
But on Facebook, you would.
It would change.
Okay.
It would be exactly the same.
Because there's a couple of cameras, I noticed. I think that's the livestream over there, and this is the one in the center, and this one are the ones that are on YouTube. I don't know. Maybe that one works from time to time.
I, I have asked IT to.
It seems I recall that one being shooting over at, like, Pol Public. Okay, so, so given that this is, this is filming council, live streaming council, et cetera, and you want to make those changes, and I don't know if you're the one to answer this, or perhaps council might know, or Mr. Negadins, et cetera. Is there legislation coming up that we have to approve to make this change or to allow the YouTube video?
The administration makes the decision, because that's administrative.
This is, this is an administrative decision.
Versus legislative.
The administration would rather have the blessing and the buy-in of the council versus just saying, hey, this is what we're going to do. Because you guys are the council, so if I'm going to change your stuff, we would rather have your buy-in.
So it's not necessarily an official act for the council that has to approve this, but rather.
The chief executive, the mayor, will just make that decision and then go from there.
Well, I appreciate the, the concerns being listened to and addressed as well. And that, that was it. You know, you keep the Facebook live, how it's always been, I'm fine with all of it.
I think it'll look nice once you get it up and running and working. I think it'll be more professional, and I like the fact that you can get the analytics with it. So, and that's great, thanks for putting that together.
Monet, thank you very much. Very nice presentation, very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move into our standard committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last week. We have two pieces of legislation. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, we also met last week. We don't have any pending legislation, and our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards Enforcement met last week, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening.
Very good. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week, our minutes are on file, we have no, I'm sorry, pending legislation on the agenda, and we plan to meet next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Services and Maintenance met last week. We don't have any pending legislation this evening. Our minutes are on file, and we will be meeting next week.
Very good. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison is not with us this evening, but Ms. Elmore has volunteered to take up.
Volunteered, no.
Yeah, but, yeah, volunteer, pretty much, pretty much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week, minutes are on file, there's no pending or draft pieces of legislation, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. And Parks Recreation, Chairperson Tech.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, we have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again next, or this Sunday, Tuesday, sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. We'll now move on to officials' reports, Mayor Vivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone that's here this evening. I know that there's a scientific phenomenon called the theory of relativity, and it's related to physical and all of Dunce physics things. But in my life personally, I cannot believe that I am coming up on 100 days of being your mayor for the City of Whitehall. April the 10th, we will do the first 100 days remarks at the YMCA. It will start at 5:30, and will go until 7:30, 8-ish. But it should be a good time. I'm expecting it to just be a fantastic event, and I'm inviting you, council. I know some of you are already out of town and scheduled to be out of town. That's fine, it will be recorded, and you'll get to see it afterwards. But members of the public, you are able and welcome to come, and I'm just looking forward to it. But it's just flown by, I can't believe it's almost 100 days, April the 10th. So that's that. Secondarily, it is still National Women's History Month. And as a result of National Women's History Month, I have a couple of women's history facts. Yesterday, we went to Life Care Alliance, and I saw some people had some envelopes about that. What you don't know is Life Care Alliance was founded in 1898 by Catherine Nelson Black, who was the wife of Sam Black, who was the mayor of the City of Columbus. And so when I went to there and I was going through Life Care Alliance, and if you don't know what Life Care does, they provide Meals on Wheels to over 8,000 people per day. And Whitehall is one of their stops. And we went there with my administrative assistant, Deanna Hannah and Monet, and we, we actually prepared meals for people that were going to receive them that day. It was, it was just a wonderful thing. The interesting, fun fact about that was hearing what Catherine Nelson Black did. I immediately went home and told my wife, she's slacking, because if she could do that and create, if she could do that and, and create something that's been around since 1898, then Joy Vivens has to, has to do a little bit more. And I've got this recorded, so, I know. And I did that on purpose to the women. I know you're cringing, and I did that on purpose just to get that reaction. So support me and my family during Women's History Month. Secondarily, Franklin County just had the opportunity to do something very historic. As you know, Franklin County's been around since 1803. And yesterday, through the primary election, Franklin County has the opportunity to elect its first black female county prosecutor. So in 220 years, the voters in Franklin County will get the choice to vote for the first black female county prosecutor in Franklin County's history. And so that's definitely a historic occasion for why we weren't here yesterday. And then certainly last but not least, this Friday at noon, I will be visiting for the very first Coffee and Conversations to a female-owned business, Racha Tea, on, I want to, what is it, 561 South Hamilton Road? But it's right on Hamilton Road, right near Atna. You're all welcome to come out there. The agenda will be very organic, we're going to talk. I want to hear citizens' concerns, I want to develop relationships. Anyone that knows me more than 30 seconds knows that I am all about developing and building relationships, even with my wife that I love very dear. I know.
Why the female-owned hotel stays out tonight?
And then, she doesn't know this, but a historic, uh, thing occurred this weekend, and I am putting her on the spot, because I know she is heavy, and it was very difficult for her to get up into the seat today. But our very own Casey Thomas got engaged this weekend. So congratulations, Casey, for a historic occasion, and I am celebrating that with you. I look forward to the wedding. So, that is it from the mayor.
And I thank you. City Attorney, Nick Ademus.
Well, that's hard to follow up.
Yes, it is.
Um, I'll keep it quick. I'm just gonna throw this out. Um, next week, committee, I hope to have more information for council. Um, as you may recall, at the end of the last legislative session, um, the General Assembly passed some, passed some bills. Some of them affected, um, tobacco retail licenses. The governor then vetoed that, and then the General Assembly overrode that veto. Um, so those laws are going to be enacted, um, I think April twenty-third is the date. Franklin County municipalities, Whitehall included, um, have tobacco retail license ordinances, um, to help prevent tobacco from getting into kids' hands and flavored tobacco and in the licensing scheme. So, there will be legislation coming to suspend our ordinance, should that law take effect. Um, and then, one of the things that we will be looking at with other municipalities is, um, joining a lawsuit against the state. Uh, because what we believe the General Assembly has done has invaded our home rule authority to regulate and, and monitor the health and safety of our, our citizens. So, um, it's, it's moving kind of quick, um, now that we're getting towards the deadline. Uh, I didn't have the legislation for tonight, because a lot of municipalities were trying to basically have the same legislation so that everybody's united in it. Um, but by next committee meeting, I should have that, and so there'll be, I'll have more details then for everybody, and that's coming up next.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. City Auditor, Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Um, Monet came to my office, uh, a few days ago, and we shot a video, uh, that was posted up on Facebook, uh, regarding the, uh, change in the hours of the tax department in my office. And I'm sure it's gone viral by now, because who doesn't want to know more about municipal income taxes? So, uh, with that, and regarding income taxes, uh, one good sign, uh, our income tax revenue for, uh, last month is more than, uh, what we took in the same time period last year. We're up over nine percent. Uh, so, uh, and that is probably attributable to the folks coming back to work on-site at DSCC. Unfortunately, our tax refunds are also up over last year. So, uh, that, you know, we have to, uh, temper our excitement over the, uh, increase in the, the tax revenue. Uh, other than that, I would ask for favorable consideration of Resolution Eight, twenty twenty-four, and Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Um, he is a very lucky man, I'll say.
Is he watching?
Uh, no, actually, like, all my chances.
We'll make sure he knows that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, um, yes, very exciting. Um, the only other thing I have is, just for the public, um, you know, Broad Street is still underway. It is a little bit slow and go, but please be patient, please be considerate. Um, you know, it's, it's a project that is gonna be a great addition and, you know, reconstruction for Broad Street. The trail is gonna be a fantastic, uh, addition to the city. So, again, please be patient, um, you know, uh, Councilman Dixon did bring to me, um, the research on the zipper merge. Um, I encourage everyone to go out and do a little bit of research on their own, um, essentially to, um, remedy the traffic. One car comes in after the other. That way, people aren't thinking that there's ditching going on. There shouldn't be any road rage. So, I urge everyone to, um, go on and research that. Um, again, please use Fifth Avenue and Main Street. Uh, I used it this morning on Fifth Avenue, and it was quick and easy. So, um, that's really all I have. Um, and just, um, Councilman Brown, thank you for, uh, if you want to go elaborate more on that later, we can, um, you can talk to him. He's got some more information on it, um, but that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director of Public Service, Greg, is not with us this evening, which brings us to Treasurer Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report this evening. I just echo the auditor's comments, and that is all.
And for that, I thank you. Uh, the following official report's been filed in the council office since the last meeting. That would include the auditor's bank reports for February twenty twenty-four, the auditor's statement of cash position report for February twenty twenty-four, and the auditor's financial report for February twenty twenty-four. Under Communications, Petitions and Claims, we have one item, which would be the agenda for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, BZVA meeting. Just now, bringing to our first poll public of the evening, and I'd invite anyone to come forward, and would just ask you to state your name, sign in on the form, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name's Merrill Robinson, and, uh, I'm here to speak on behalf of, of the StreamYard Project, because I had shared this with, uh, Monet and the, and the staff. This is a tool that I have used since twenty twenty. Uh, I don't work for the company. I don't get any money back. Uh, but I've run several conferences with it and routinely use it. Uh, it sends things to Facebook as well as YouTube. The quality's very, very good. It's almost impossible for somebody to Zoom-bomb you, as they do with YouTube sessions and things like that. It can handle ten-plus users, and they're now experimenting with transcripts, so the potential for the future is that you may be able to do those kinds of things as well. So I'd really like to encourage you to support that, because I think it's gonna give you a better product and provide better information to the citizens.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing no one? Ms. Odd, would you please call Roll? Ask whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have gotten a legislation this evening. Uh, the same holds true under second reading, which brings us to first readings. First is Resolution Eight, twenty twenty-four. Authorize the mayor to accept an Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of State Fire Marshal SFM equipment grant and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Eight, twenty twenty-four, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce Resolution Eight, twenty twenty-four, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, there's been a motion for adoption by Ms. Heck, by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I was just hoping, and I know that, uh, Mr. Quinzel explained these, uh, two pieces of legislation during the agenda, but I know that sometimes people don't catch the agenda meeting, and then since this is the regular voting meeting, if you wouldn't mind just reiterating what you told us.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, I'd be glad to. Uh, so, the fire department applied for a grant through the, uh, State Fire Marshal's office. They applied for fifteen thousand dollars. They were awarded ten thousand dollars. This is not a reimbursable grant, so we don't have to go out and spend money and turn in invoices and proof of payment, and then get, get the money returned to the city. Uh, this is ten thousand dollars to spend on, uh, equipment. And my understanding is that it, uh, the grant's, uh, just says miscellaneous equipment, but, uh, I believe the fire department has some specific extrication equipment that they wish to purchase, uh, with this money. And so, the, uh, the resolution is just to, uh, be able to accept the grant. And the ordinance following this is to be able to put that money in an expense account so that the purchase may be made, uh, because we all have already received the check.
Thank you, Mr. Quinzel.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Resolution Eight, twenty twenty-four, has been adopted. Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four, appropriating ten thousand dollars from previously unappropriate monies in the Fire Department Grant Fund Two Twenty-One to the Fire Department Grant Fund SFM Equipment Grant Expense Account Two Twenty-One, point zero zero zero, point fifty thousand sixty, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Thank you.
A second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkar, to introduce Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for adoption.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkar, to adopt Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call Roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Ordinance Fifteen, twenty twenty-four, has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public, and as with our first, I'd invite anyone to come forward, state your name, please sign in. You'll have up to three minutes. Okay, seeing nothing. I'll now move on to community day board.
Uh, this Saturday is the Easter Eve concert at the YMCA at ten o'clock.
April eighth will be the eclipse party.
Okay, that's...
Looking forward to that.
Make sure you get your glasses.
I know, I will.
Anything else for community day board? Then I'll move on to poll council. Ms. Heck?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, everybody that's watching from home. Thank you, everybody that came in today. Um, thank you, Mamet, for your presentation on the YouTube, um, and clearing up some, um, or answering, rather, some of the discussion and questions we had from last time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. Uh, thank you for those in attendance this evening. Thank you to those watching at home. Um, uh, thank you again, uh, for the, taking the comments and coming with solutions. I really appreciate that. I look forward to having a much clearer stream. Um, you can get a lot of information off Facebook, but our teeny-tiny blurry faces are frustrating sometimes. So I look forward to expanding that public access. Thank you for your comments on Women's History Month. Um, I really appreciate that. Um, sometimes, you know, it's easy to forget about those things. There's so many things going on, so I appreciate you taking that time to point that out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Harkar?
Um, yes, uh, thank you as well for the presentation. I, I do appreciate that. I think that's very helpful to make sure that everybody, um, understands that. Um, I really always hate to follow the mayor whenever he speaks on anything, so I'm gonna have to, uh, can we move him after me? So, I did want to, uh, for Women's History Month, well, um, now I just feel like I need to recognize Joy Bivens. Our mayor's gonna maybe be in trouble when he gets home, so, um, but I, I wanted to, uh, since we were also tying in with Literacy Week, which became Literacy Month, I sort of got on this little rabbit hole of like, oh, we should talk about some of the women in history, and then I could get a book and I could donate it. So I started going a little overboard, um, on the books, but I wanted to talk about a couple of women in history that I thought were really important. Um, uh, since it is Ramadan, I thought it would be nice to talk about Malala. I know a lot of people may already know her. Um, I brought the, her book in to donate, um, so that some other child can maybe read, some other child. I'm like a big kid at heart. So, um, so maybe some kiddo could read this and be inspired by her. But, uh, if you don't know who she is, she was a really big proponent of education for women and girls, um, and was shot by the Taliban as a, as a child on her school bus. Um, did not let that stop her, did not let the fear of being attacked stop her, and continued to be very outspoken on these matters. Other books that I got, which I don't go over in three minutes. Um, okay, I'm not really a country music fan, but I thought it was appropriate to bring one on Dolly Parton, because she grew up really poor, and she has made a really good name for herself. Who doesn't love the song Jolene? Like, that's fun, right? Okay, you can't not love that. But also, like, with all of her money, or a lot of her money that she does now, she does have the, um, Imagination Library. So she puts books into children's hands, millions of books every year, which I thought was awesome. Um, other ones I've had to bring in for Frida, because I have an arts background. Um, a Mexican painter known for portraits, self-portraits. Um, her work is, like, very inspirational. Her home, La Casa Azul, is actually a museum now in Mexico that, actually, a friend of mine was just at it a couple weeks ago. I'm a little jealous. Um, I brought in a book on Harriet Tubman, because you can't talk about women's history and not have Harriet Tubman. I feel like that wouldn't be right. Um, American abolitionist, social justice, um, activist. Um, Tubman, uh, made thirteen mission trips to go back, um, and rescue seventy enslaved people, um, including, uh, members of her family and her friends, using safe houses and other anti, um, other abolitionists in the underground railroad. And my last one I brought was Ruby Bridges. I think she's really important, because she is sixty-nine years old now. She's younger than my parents. And so I think when we think about Women's History, Black History Month, we sometimes think about, like, ancient history. So I thought she was a, would be a good person to mention, because she is only sixty-nine years old. Um, and so I wanted to just mention her. And I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
I think those are some wonderful examples that you are doing.
You can have those for your literacy table.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Potter. Uh, I want to thank everyone, uh, watching from home, and I want to thank everyone of, uh, the folks here in the audience who came out, uh, tonight to, uh, view the proceedings. Uh, I would like to thank the mayor, and, uh, well, first of all, I would like to thank Ms. White for the presentation. Very well done, and I would like to thank the mayor for, uh, listening to the concerns of council in, in such an endeavor. And I would like to thank the mayor for what I see as his, uh, earnest efforts to listen to not just council, but, uh, the people themselves and do the right thing. I, I, I find it commendable, and I wanted to say so. Uh, and, let's see if I wrote anything else. No, I wanted to, uh, acknowledge the historic engagement of Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Historic.
Yeah.
You never know what will happen.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
And to the mayor, I say good luck with, uh, Mrs. Bivens tonight. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President Potter. Uh, I would just like to thank everyone who's watching online. Uh, thank you to everyone here in person. Um, thank you, Monet, for the, uh, presentation. Like I said, I, I very much appreciate, uh, you and your work with Mayor Bivens and whoever else helped put the presentation together to, uh, you know, really address concerns and, like, um, Councilperson Smith said, you know, really come up with solutions. So, thank you for that. Uh, thank you all for your reports and making the city better, so, that's it.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to our viewers, uh, for always sticking in there and, and watching. Now you have more analytics and more information. We have more information for you. Um, thank you, um, Monet, for all your information and just, um, making sure that we have a good understanding of how we're going to move from platform to platform, and what that's gonna do to the city, uh, or for the city of Whitehall. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Robinson, for always being positive and, and reinforcing and affirming that we're on the right direction, and that you are assisting us or helping. And as a resident that is participating in your community, that's really important. You are, you're participating, you're engaging, and, um, that's, that's needed. So I appreciate, uh, your efforts and what you do, uh, on that front. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor, for always giving us insight, providing good information, and I'm looking forward to the state of the city, um, that you're going to, uh, present. And I know you're gonna give us some innovative, um, ideas and just give us a gleam, a glimpse of where we're headed, um, since you've been in for the hundred days. I echo everything everybody else has said. I won't repeat, and, um, everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, well, I think everything's been very well covered all the way around, so rather than repeat, I will just thank everyone for their, uh, their comments. I thought they were really well done. And to, uh, the folks that came up and presented, thank you. That was some very good information and helped us, uh, golf the concerns, and it's making a smooth transition for all. So, hearing nothing additional in front of this council, I will mark us adjourned at seven forty-nine.